Commissioner Phi, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay, for some of it I couldn't hear you, but I can hear you now. Okay.
We were being very quiet.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
Lights, camera, action.
All right, good morning, Commissioners, and we are live. Chair Harrington, so over to you.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 8th, 2022, Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. Clerk Moss, announcements and roll call, please.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners is now also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts, meeting this regular session, November 8th, 2022. Commissioner Phi?
I'm here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Threes?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here.
And I'll announce Commissioner Willie is excused from today.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Today, we are expected to have a very short business meeting, so we will be returning to work session at approximately 10:45, right after this meeting. We have a couple of changes to our agenda since the agenda for today was first published. We have an eighth item on our consent agenda, and then we added a proclamation, and that's under category F. We will also be, after the adoption of the consent agenda, we will be pausing and recognizing an award recipient from a member of our Clean Water Services staff. So, the next item on our agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of our community to address the board on any topic they would like for up to two minutes an individual. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone signed up today?
We do. Chair Harrington, Dale Feig. Dale?
Welcome.
A group dedicated to open, transparent government and supporting sound government, which I think Washington County is. I sent you an email, and I want to summarize that. I think there were three items, but before I do that, I want to compliment Philip Brandsford, the Communication Director, because I noticed, and I've been working with him, and I noticed that there were no notices on the A-frames out front saying that you have commission meetings. And so, he's got that done. I went out and checked, and he said he would, and they're both in the back, in the front of the building, so the public will know that a commission meeting is taking place now. And hopefully, that'll happen every time there's a commission meeting. Second thing I want to compliment is the video. I checked, I went out of the work session and checked to see if the work session has been video-recorded, and it was live. In the past, it was all just audio, and most of you, everybody generally speaks up, so it can be heard when it's recorded. And so, I checked, and it is video now, so the community and whatever, whoever wants to, can actually go back and review it, or they can do it live when it's happening. And that's an upgrade, I consider, on the county's ability to communicate with the public and other interested people. Forty-nine seconds. I sent you an email, and I do want to emphasize, the first thing had to do with racial relations, and I referred to you what the publishers of the Oregonian did on how the Oregonian apologized for being racial, biased, and not even allowing the black community to vote in Oregon. And so, the Oregonian personally apologized for their bad reporting. So, I have a link in there for that. The other two things, I can't remember what I sent you about. Oh, oh, I had to make an apology to my friend. I said my friend worked for the county. He did not. He worked for Hillsborough, City of Hillsborough, in reference to the three links that I have. And the third thing was just a juggler, hilarious. I hope you had a chance to laugh on Election Day and all days. Nice to have humor.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. Would any member other in our auditorium wish to provide comment for up to two minutes? Seeing initial sign-ups, would anyone in our online attendees wish to provide comment for the board up to two minutes on any county-related topic? Give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, and thank you, Mr. Feig, for joining us in person. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of eight items: one set of minutes, four items from Clean Water Services, one item from Land Use and Transportation, one item from Support Services, and one item from Housing Services. What are the wishes of the Commission?
Move to accept.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting today's consent agenda, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Mark Jockers, representing Clean Water Services, to help us recognize one of our senior contributors here to Clean Water Services on national award.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and members of Clean Water Services Board of Directors. It's my pleasure to have the opportunity today, and I'm going to go ahead and invite Ting up here to join us at the table. Dr. Ting Lu, who works for Clean Water Services, is being honored by Virginia Tech's Sustainable Water Industry Management Center, or SWIM Center, with their 2022 Industry Leadership Award. Very, very well deserved. Ting directs the research and innovation of Integrated Water Resource Technology and Research Team at Clean Water Services. That team really focuses on developing advanced monitoring, modeling, and molecular tools to support operations, planning, and regulatory compliance here in the basin. Her dedication is really to learning and to teaching. Those of you that have met Ting, she is very dedicated to that. She's committed to really accelerating digital transformation through collaboration and partnerships, and she's been involved with SWIM for many years, providing thought leadership and guidance to advance the intelligent water journey. She brings people together to really talk about this work, and she's also a project advisor for the Water Research Foundation. Locally, she also hosts something called Clean Water Tech Talks on Clean Water Learning Online, a channel that we have. It's a podcast where she speaks with industry leaders and experts to share best practices and details on the latest technologies, such as the Internet of Things and digital twins. So, Ting will be traveling to Virginia in December to accept this award, and we wanted to provide an opportunity for her to come in and be recognized for that. Thank you very much. And I think I will go ahead and hand it over to Ting if she wants to say anything, and I think there'd be an opportunity for us to take a picture together.
Thank you, Mark, and good morning, Chair Harrington, Commissioner Threes, and Commissioner Rogers. I just want to say thank you so much for your recognition. It's really an honor, and I'm actually a little bit surprised because it's, well, you know, this is the things I'm doing every day, and it's a bigger part I look at is the recognition for Clean Water Services as well, besides myself. So, I'll be traveling to Virginia Tech, the Research Center. This is their first in-person meeting on December 7th, so there is a ceremony in the evening to receive the award.
Commissioner Rogers just needs to step out for a moment and get a drink of water. Dr. Lu, I would just like to highlight the, your spirit of innovation. To you, there are things that you do every day, but you are an everyday innovator, and that has contributed not only to the business of Clean Water Services in cleaning our wastewater from homes and businesses, but has also helped contribute positively to the industry. But everything that underlies this is the fact that science is really cool, and you can have a lot of fun implementing new science and digital technologies to the betterment, not only of the industry and our community, but also to the care of our planet. So, thank you for helping to teach me and the other board members about the innovation in this industry and really bringing some modern and cool techniques forward, so that more, more girls, more boys who are learning math and science in our elementary schools know that it's so important for them to learn at their young age, because in our long adult lives, they're going to get to do some really cool things, whether it's here on Planet Earth or on other planets and in space. So, please learn now, kids. It's fun. Being an adult can be really fun.
I'd just like to second what the Chair just said, but I'd also like to add that I, what I really appreciate, aside from all of your knowledge base and your sharing, is your ability to take complex situations and break them down so that laypeople can understand, and I'd certainly put myself in that category. So, thank you. You do a great job, and it's a well-deserved honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you. I don't know what was getting me there for a minute, but we've known each other for a while since you came to the organization, and you have done just outstanding work, and your trajectory is an interesting one. You would think that you'd just be in the engineering area only, but because of your vast knowledge and technology, and you're someone who brings innovation to the organization. So, I keep telling Diane and all the others, you are a star, absolute star, and I am so pleased you're with us.
Thank you for all of your support to make this happening. I could really want to see that. Thank you. And also, Mark and Diane's support, our senior leadership's support to make an impact.
Commissioner Phi, do you have any comments you'd like to provide before we get together for a picture here?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Congratulations for this well-deserved. I'm sorry I'm not there to take picture with you, but I want you to know I sincerely congratulate you, and well-deserved, and good luck on your trip to accept that award.
Thank you, Commissioner Si.
So, if you would join us for a picture. From last week, this is one where we will first have a second reading of the proposed ordinance, 892, by title only, but for that, we need a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
I moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Mr. Carr?
Ordinance 892, an ordinance amending the Washington County Code, Chapter 3.27, the Washington County Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, or CPACE.
And now, we'll have a brief staff report before we hold our public hearing.
Terrific. Thank you, and good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Matt Crigg. I'm Washington County's Economic Development Manager. We do have a very brief staff report for you all this morning, as this is pretty self-explanatory here. Next slide, please. So, I'll be presi-- oh, I do. That's right. Thank you very much. I have the control. And sometimes it, let's see here. Oh, there we go. Terrific. Thank you. So, for this morning, I'll be presenting ordinance 892, which adopts Washington County Charter, Chapter 3.27. Washington County Code, Chapter 3.27, establishes the Washington County Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program as authorized by Oregon Revised Statutes 223.680 and 223.685. The proposed ordinance 892 makes changes to the CPACE program to require an assessment following two years of program authorization and implementation, and a sunset to the program unless sooner continued on December 31st, 2025. So, that is, that is just about it. I'd be happy to take any questions that the Commission may have.
Commissioner, do you have any questions? Seeing none. I'd like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak on this matter?
We had no one sign up. Chair Harrington, would any member, oh, Mr. Feig? You can come testify.
I'd like to recognize for the record Mr. Dale Feig, who is wishing to address us in this public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair Catherine Harrington, Commissioners Pam Threes, and Commissioner Roy Rogers and staff. I had a chance to communicate with Robin Strawn about this. You know, she's the, as you know, she's the Sustainability Manager-Director of the County, and she and I have emailed each other back and forth about this ordinance, ordinance 891, and she assured me that this is just kind of a preliminary thing you need to do, even though it sets a two-year maybe timeline, but it's also to see whether it works and to get data on it then. But I understand, in the past, you were unanimous in the adoption of 891, so I don't think it's a controversial thing, okay? Climate change is real. It's here. As you said during work session, Catherine, Chair Harrington, you know, we need to do more now than later, and the more that each of us can do individually, and I think I said, or collectively, as governmental agencies or whatever, and that can be city, state, region, national. This is, as I said before in a public comment, the former Secretary of State Kerry said, and he, he and I think former Secretary of State Brendan Albrecht started what's called World War Zero. And World War Zero, you know, we had World War One, World War Two, and we really don't want to have World War Three, which could be nuclear. And as I said before, I was really into trying to prevent, oh, I have 15 seconds, trying to prevent a nuclear war, but I really can't deal with that, but I can deal with climate change. I don't want us to have a nuclear war, blow up, burn all at once. We don't want to do it slowly through climate change, so I appreciate your actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. Is there anyone else in the auditorium that would like to provide testimony on this public hearing item? Seeing none. Would any members in our online virtual attendees like to provide public testimony on this public hearing? I'll give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, and with that, I will close today's public hearing. I would just like to comment that, yes, previously, as noted, the Commission was unanimous in adopting the ordinance to put in place the Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, known as CPACE. This is a program that helps enable improvement of commercial buildings throughout Washington County, and it involves just a little bit of staff support from Washington County, but it is one way that we can encourage the commercial properties within our community to invest in energy-saving solutions, which is a good thing for our larger community. Are there any other wishes of the Commission before we take roll call vote?
I'd move for adoption, and then we can take roll call.
Second.
Clerk Moss, we have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 892. Roll call, please.
Yes. Commissioner Phi?
Yes.
Commissioner Threes?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Chair Harrington?
Yes. The motion is unanimous four to zero. Next, we'll move on to our action items, and this topic comes from our Land Use and Transportation Department to consider approving the updated 2021-2023 Long Range Planning Work Plan and authorize the filing of ordinances. So, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Erin Wardell, our Interim Planning and Development Services Manager, who is joined by Teresa Churniak, our Principal Planner. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Erin Wardell. I'm the Interim Planning and Development Services Manager. With me is Teresa Churniak, Principal Planner for Community Planning, and we have a brief staff report.
Thank you both. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. We're here today requesting board adoption of the Long Range Planning Work Program, which you did consider at work session October 18th. Typically, each year, the Department of Land Use and Transportation prepares a work program for the Long Range Planning Section and brings it to the board for consideration. It includes the work of long-range planning, which includes transportation and community planning, and the work includes ordinances and studies, as well as our day-to-day work supporting the Planning Commission, preparing plan amendments, doing transportation modeling, and the like. The work program guides us throughout the year and ensures the department's limited resources are focused on the board's highest priorities. Much of the work is multi-year or ongoing. We were delayed this year. There we go. There you go. We were, we were delayed this year, as was the slide, due to the pandemic and a number of pressing tasks with state deadlines, which in effect resulted in a two-year work program with a midterm status report. We did that status report on October 18th, where we went over the status of tasks in the approved 2021 to 2022 work program, new mandated tasks and new requests. Since there's still significant work to do on our Tier One tasks and several new mandated tasks, staff noted we didn't believe there was room for additional tasks to be added. At that work session, the board provided direction to return with this action item to modify the Long Range Planning Work Program Table to add the mandated tasks and authorize filing of new ordinances. And then, the board did also give us direction to start working on a two-year work program for the coming two fiscal years, 2023 to 2025. We'll start that work early next year. And in that work, we would consider new tasks and using a similar process as we have in the past with public input and review. Staff is therefore recommending at this time that the board approve the updated 2021 to 2023 Long Range Planning Work Program Table 1 to update the current status, add mandated tasks, and authorize the filing of new ordinances for these tasks for fiscal year 2022 to 2023. And with that, I will end my presentation.
Thank you very much for the staff report. Do we have any questions or comments from the Commission? Do we have a motion to approve the updated Long Range Planning Work Program?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, and along with that, we will be voting to authorize the filing of ordinances for the tasks that are listed, where we not have previously provided such authorization. All those in favor of this action, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Thank you, colleagues. Next, we'll move on to proclamations, and with this, I would like to turn the mic over to Commissioner Nafisa Phi.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Sorry. Can you all hear me okay? Is there background noise? Okay, perfect. Thank you, Chair Harrington. This is the proclamation. I think we had a discussion this morning, or, but I wanted to bring forward this proclamation in honor of Transgender Awareness Week, November 13 to November 19. And I'd like to read the proclamation on record, and I think we're going to make an amendment, and I think Tom will cue us in when that change is going to happen. Before I read or now?
I'll, I'll speak to that now. So, we would like, there are a number of where-ases in this proclamation, and, one, two, three, four, five. We would like to insert a new one between the fifth whereas, whereas in 2019 Senate Bill 577, and before the sixth one, whereas in 2021, House Bill 3041, to recognize the work of this Commission from March of 2021. And that whereas will be, whereas this proclamation builds off of this board's March 16th, 2021 unanimous support for Recognizing International Day of Trans Visibility, semicolon, and. So, after your fifth one, I'm more than happy to read this new one, and then turn it back to you to read the sixth one, if that helps you.
That's very helpful. That's brilliant. Yes, if you don't mind, we'll text him on that side. Okay, perfect. And may I read the proclamation now?
Yes, please.
Okay, perfect. Board of Commissioners for Washington County, a proclamation in honor of Transgender Awareness Week, November 13 to November 19, 2022. Whereas Transgender Day of Remembers, in parentheses, November 20th, was started in 1999 by transgender advocate Gwendolyn Ann Smith as a vigil to honor her memory of Rita Hester, a transgender woman who was killed in 1998. And whereas, even with continued attempts in some states to enact oppressive legislations that threatens the rights and safety of transgender people, the community is resilient, and their invaluable contributions and enduring activism can never be forgotten. Whereas, the National Transgender Discrimination Survey showed that 26% of trans people lost a job due to bias, 50% were harassed on the job, 20% were evicted or denied housing, and 78% of trans students were harassed or assaulted. And whereas, it is estimated that over 134,000 American veterans are transgender, and over 15,000 trans people are serving in military today. And whereas, in 2019, Senate Bill 577 clarified that gender identity is a protected class in Oregon, and--
Whereas this proclamation builds off of this board's March 16th, 2021 unanimous support for Recognizing International Day of Trans Visibility-- support for recognizing International Day of Trans Visibility, and...
Whereas in 2021, House Bill 3041 further clarified existing anti-discrimination protections by creating a standalone definition for gender identity, and by adding it to all statutes that reference sexual orientations. And whereas we acknowledge that amidst the backdrops of the COVID-19 pandemic and the county's continuing struggle to seek justice for Black lives, that 2021 was the deadliest year on record for transgender and gender non-conforming people in the United States, and those murdered were almost all Black and Brown women. And whereas becoming an ally to the transgender community is an ongoing process and requires learning through education and awareness, and now therefore be it resolved that on this day, on this eighth day of November 2022, the Washington County Board of Commissioners to hereby proclaim November 13 to November 19, 2022, as a Transgender Awareness Week in Washington County, and urge all community residents to continue working towards eliminating discrimination and injustice wherever it exists.
Thank you Commissioner Phi, and before I ask for a motion and a second to adopt this proclamation, I'd like to see if any Commissioners have any comments.
Thank you Chair, and I'd like to express my appreciation to Commissioner Phi for bringing this forward. This is an important proclamation. I absolutely support it, and we need to be, we need to be aware, we need to be vigilant and protect all people, but especially transgender people in this situation. Thank you again for bringing it forward, and Chair, thank you for your amendment. I will be supporting this.
I can. I'm supporting the item as well. Unlike some things I voted against, I think this is very balanced, and we have a long history in Washington County of, of saying that any kind of bias, any kind of discrimination is a big no. Absolute no. Hard no. We don't need to compare it to any other groups, any other people. We just simply say it's a no. And so I'm a yes on this as well.
Do we have a motion to adopt today's proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the proclamation in honor of Transgender Awareness Week, November 13 through 19, 2022, please raise your hand or say aye. Thank you Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Thank you Commissioners. Next, we have our second public comment period of the meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to address the board for up to five minutes, a person. Clerk Moss.
Thank you Chair Harrington. We do not have anyone in the room that signed up to testify. Would anyone in our online attendees wish to provide comment for up to five minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you Clerk Moss. Next, for board announcements, I would just like to remind everyone to please get your ballot turned into an official ballot drop box by 8:00 PM this evening. If you are looking for locations of those, you can please check out our county website, washingtoncountyor.gov, and there's an elections button right on the main page. Beyond that, I just want to announce that we will not be having board meetings for the next two weeks. We will reconvene in our board meetings on Tuesday, November 29th, in work session in the afternoon at 2:00, and a board meeting in the evening starting at 6:30. And then we're into the month of December. December 1st, we'll have our roundtable starting at 10:00 AM. That's one hour later than usual. And Tuesday, December 6th, will be our, our first Tuesday set of meetings for the month, with a work session starting at 9:00. Then the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting at 10:00, with the Board of Commissioners meeting following that at approximately 10:30 AM. That evening, December 6th, we will also have our fourth Board of Commissioners Town Hall for this calendar year. That will be highlighting with each member of the Commission, the five of us, talking about some of the accomplishments of the year that we are most proud of, and with the agency or in our role as Commissioners. So I hope you'll join us whether in person, right here in the Public Services Building Auditorium, or through one of our multiple online avenues, via YouTube, TVC, TV, streaming, video, Zoom, you name it, our team makes it happen. So that's it from me. Are there any other board announcements for today? Nope. Seeing none? Do we have a motion to adjourn today's Board of Commissioners meeting?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning today's business meeting, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you Commissioners. Any opposed? The meeting is hereby adjourned, and we will reconvene in our work session in approximately five or so minutes. See you at about 10:50 or so. Thank you.